We'll call the August the 4th, 2015 meeting of the Jackson City Council of Order. We're going to ask Councilman Scott Conger to lead us in an invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Please bow with me. Blessed gracious heavenly Father, we come before you today and give you thanks for the many blessings you bestow upon us and our city. We ask that you watch over those who serve and protect us every day and guide this council as we make decisions to best serve the city of Jackson. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show all council people present, with the exception of Councilman Cisco, Kyle Rorke this morning, will not be able to be here. Item four is approval of minutes of July 7th, 2015, meeting, and council members have copies of those minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, no objections, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as distributed. Item five is invitation of public comment, and I'll indicate to the people present, if you wish to make any comment under new business, if you'll let me know at that time, we'll be happy to call on you and let you come and address the council. We have no proclamations this morning, and I have been asked by President Harold Carter, the local chapter of NWAACP, to address the council, and I would recommend suspension of the rules, and if there's no objection from council, we'll go ahead and hear President Harold Carter. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the council, Mayor, congratulations on your successful election. We appreciate you for what you do. We look forward to working with you in the coming years. I'm going to introduce this briefly, my political action chair, Mr. Marshall Brooks, who will have a few comments. And if you were here, again, thank you very much. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, again, good morning. My name is Marshall Brooks, and the political acting chairperson for the Jackson NWAACP. Our concern this morning, well, our president this morning used to continue our partnership with the city of Jackson, police department and security, body cameras for our officers. We support our police officers, of course, by all means, for the job that they do and realizing that they put their lives on the line every day for the safety of our community. But, in furtherance, our effort in building a better police relationship, we are asking for community participation in developing public policy on racial profiling. As mandated by Tennessee state law recently passed and signed by the governor, we thank you for your time, and we thank you for the services that you do to our fair city of Jackson, Tennessee. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll be having an update, surely, on our body cams. I think our police department is looking at guidelines and legislation, so that'll be forthcoming, and I appreciate you being here and appreciate you, President Carter.
Thank you very much.
So, the first reading, item seven, consideration of ordinance to accept Cross Creek Cove, located within Cross Creek subdivision, running north off Old Humboldt Road, directly across from Glenn Echo Drive.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
It's a section of street, right?
Yes, sir.
Move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is an ordinance on first reading, so let me open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to be heard in opposition to the pass this ordinance or accepting the ordinance. Anyone present who would like to speak on this particular ordinance? If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion, the second discussion.
Yes, I have one question.
Go ahead.
What is the condition of the street at this time?
It's my understanding that the street is going to be overlaid with some paving, but that's the only thing that I know of. But Scott Chandler, the city engineer, can answer that more fully.
I had one question stand, though not one stood this morning. Have you heard anything from the neighbors there?
Nothing negative.
Okay, Mayor, come here. So, we're accepting the street before it's finished?
No, this street is existing. This street has been in place for some time. It was a private street originally, and they're asking that the street be made public, so that's the process that we're following for acceptance.
Councilman Brown's question about the overlay, what were you referring to there then?
It just needs, you know, some update on the final surface, you know, the pavement on top, just an overlay, just repaving.
There's no schedule as far as resurfacing that, along with many other streets. It'll fall into the priority list with all the other streets that we have to looking at as far as resurfacing.
I don't understand why we're accepting, if we're accepting the cost of doing the overlay, why are we not requiring them to do that before we accept it? That's what confuses me a little bit.
I can't really answer that. You know, this street has been asked to be accepted, and that's what's before you today, and that's the only deficiency that I know is that it's in need of some overlay, but Scott Chandler could answer that more fully than I could.
Could you give us an estimate on the cost of doing that, Scott? I mean, normally we don't accept streets until they're in good order, you know.
I can't remember exactly. We did do an estimate on that, and I'm thinking it's in the nine to $12,000 range, which is not a lot, you know, in terms of paving, but, you know, it is a short stub, cul-de-sac, but I mean, I think that's one of the reasons they're wanting to make it a public street. It does need an overlay done, and that's all that's needed for the time, but they're wanting us to take over maintenance of it.
Now, this will be a pavement. It won't be just a ceiling. It will be totally paved.
It will be paving, yeah.
But this was not in our original streets that we were going to pay for this year.
Right, well, we have looked at it, if it was going to be coming into the city, we did look at, you know, what we would need to do at a minimum to it, and best I remember, it was, like I said, between nine and 12,000.
And you included that in your budget? Okay.
Council has, in a number of cases over the years, accepted existing streets that were once private. Really don't know why they were private at the time, other than the fact that the developers of both commercial and residential areas elected to just keep it private, and thusly, you know, as people, residents changes, retail, commercial changes, obviously, it poses problems as far as the maintenance of those streets, and that street has been there for a number of years.
It's never been gated, as far as I know. It's always been open.
Yeah, it's never, it's not a gated street, but it did start out private, as many other streets are, but upon occasion, the council would take those private streets and deem them public to improve them for the residents who live on the street, either residentially or in a commercial setting, so.
I have a question for me. So, Scott, the developer requested that this, is the developer requesting this?
I think it was several residents requested to the mayor.
That's my second question would be, through the original planning process, the street was private?
Yes.
The city has actually had the code in there on occasion. At the end of this cul-de-sac, there's a ditch that gets blocked up majorly, and so we have had to access, which we typically would not go into a public, to a private drive, but we have had to access that to prevent flooding and whatnot from time to time.
About how many residents live on this street, you know?
Three or four.
Just three or four, yeah.
What was the rationale for wanting to make the street public instead of private?
You mean for starting out private in the first place?
Yeah, first, but then what's the rationale for the change?
You know, I really don't know, because normally, private streets are done because they're going to control access. But this street never had controlled access, so there was really no reason for it to be private, other than it made the residents responsible for the maintenance of it, and over time, this street has been in place for some time, and it went through the normal subdivision process and was platted as a private street, but then the residents, because of the small number of residents, they're not able to maintain this street, and they asked the city if they would accept it, and that's why we're following this process. There's two processes in the subdivision regulations that streets can go through for acceptance. One is they go through the normal subdivision process, you know, the developer builds the street, and then they do everything that's necessary for the street to be brought up to standard, and then we accept it on the tail end. Or the council, the legislative body, can accept a street, and once the city council accepts that street, it's just the same as if it went through the subdivision process, and this one did originally, it's just it went through as a private street. Now, they're wanting to make it public, because, again, because of the small number of residents, they're just not able to maintain this street, and there's no advantage to them to be private.
And these residents are paying property taxes.
Yes, they are paying property taxes.
Well, I think initially, that particular, again, there are only four or five homes there, I think initially, as it was developed, it was planned on having limited access with a gate. The gate has never been installed. It's been an open street, being used by the public to either visit or go in and turn around and go in an opposite direction, so. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we already have the motion. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
We have five members in favor, one abstaining, and two voting no.
Item two is consideration of ordinance to amend the text of the city of Jackson zoning ordinance, Article Five, Specific District Regulation, Section 11, B4, General Business District. C uses use permitted as special exceptions. Three, climate-controlled storage, along with amendment to Article Six, Regulations Applying to Specific to Several or All Districts, Section 21 of Self-Storage facilities.
That's a mouthful.
Wow.
It's not as difficult as it sounds, but it's, we make it sound that way, don't we? In a B4 right now, you're not allowed to have mini-storage at all, and that's the way our zoning ordinance is designed, that as we move up the scale in terms of intensity in zones, some uses are allowed, and then you kind of build upon that, and other uses are added as you move up, and in the B4, mini-storage has never been allowed at all, and we had an applicant that was looking to establish a mini-storage, but it was not your typical miniStorage in that it was all internal, it was in a building, there was no typical miniStorage where you had external doorways opening up and outside storage, and so we're asking to amend the B4 to allow this on appeal. Again, it's not outright, they'll still go to the border zoning appeals, they'll look at their plan for business, what they're going to do, how they're going to arrange it, but it's limited to indoor climate-controlled, because we felt, you know, if you have storage inside, there's no external doors, it's all inside, all climate-controlled, it's no different than if you had another building sitting there, so we are recommending this to you, and you have the materials pertinent to this request.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion for approval, and second.
Question on the motion, this to be part of the civic master plan, that's what you want it to be? That's what you're requesting?
No, this is the one dealing with self-storage.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Again, this is an ordinance on first reading, and which necessitates a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to see if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard, passage of this ordinance. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion, the second, the discussion.
B4, right? B4, yes, sir.
Councilman Wallace.
In the ordinance, it says there's no exterior access. Obviously, there's going to be access somehow or another from the outside, but is there just going to be like one double door they enter through, or?
It means there's no external access to the units.
I understand that, but I mean the...
But they'll be, yes, you'll go in through a door that will be access-controlled, and they'll be able to go in there and then access their units.
Will they be able to pull vehicles inside, or?
I doubt that, and usually, normally, these units, these climate-controlled units are not that large, but I guess if somebody bought a unit big enough and wanted to keep their vehicle in a climate-controlled environment, I guess they could.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Any other discussion? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is consideration of ordinance to amend the text of the city of Jackson zoning ordinance, Article Five, Specific District Regulation, Sections 1 through 7, by deleting Redevelopment Area Design Review Section and replacing it with Civic Master Plan Subareas slash Redevelopment Areas Design Review, along with amendment to Article Six, Regulations Applying to Specific to Several or to All Districts, Section 3, Application of District Regulations.
Again, this sounds complex, but all we're doing is adding the words "master plan", Civic Master Plan Subareas. Right now, we have the Redevelopment Areas Design Review already on our books in the zoning ordinance. We also have design review required in redevelopment areas throughout the zoning classes. All we're doing is adding the words Civic Master Plan Subareas, so that the areas that are not currently under a redevelopment design review will now be covered under the same section, so the two areas that we're talking about are the Old Hickory Mall area and the South Jackson corridor area. The other areas that we have, Omen Arena, airways, those areas are already covered under redevelopment areas, so they're already under design review, but this just puts all of it together under design review, so as new projects come forward, we can make sure they're in alignment with the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, under the master plan, Mr. Chairman, under the master plan, CRA, is it included, or is it still exclusive?
In terms of the design review? Design review now, it goes through the Planning Commission for review. If it's an historic area, it goes through the Historic Zoning Commission. The CRA, if they're asked to participate in the project, in other words, if they're asked to incentivize or assemble property or help in redeveloping a particular piece of property, then they would be involved early on before we even get into design review, so they are involved if they're a part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
And Stan, this is basically a 20-year project.
It is a 20-year plan, of course, you know, we expect that there will be updates along the way, because, again, a plan that's static soon loses its credibility and its value, so we will look at it and evaluate it, but yes, it covers a 20-year period. We don't expect to do all these things overnight, but we feel like that this plan can serve as a guide and also serve as policy. As we make decisions on what we're going to fund, we can look at how those things will be funded in relationship to how it advances the goals and objectives in the plan.
But it will be reviewed periodically?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Why don't I go ahead and open the public hearing? Again, this is an ordinance on first reading, and see if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard in support of or in opposition to the passage of this particular ordinance. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion from council?
Stan, originally, I thought you were saying we're just changing the wording on it to, so we include the master plan, but you refer, we're adding some areas also that are going to be covered under this that weren't previously?
That's right, we're adding the word, that's the reason why we're adding the words of Civic Master Plan Subareas, because most of our subareas, we have five of them in the plan, all those five areas are covered under our normal redevelopment and design review that we already have on the books, except for two, so this allows those two to be covered under the same design review process as the other.
Which two are we adding?
Old Hickory Mall area and South Jackson corridor.
Okay, so we're going to require some additional regulations that have to be followed for those two areas before developers or builders can, have we had any kickback from any of the builders, or?
No, because, again, all that we're doing is, as we have projects, because, you know, this process is multifaceted. The CRA will be looking at ways to incentivize and help, and we'll also be working with developers on the front end to design projects that fit within what we've seen for the master plan, because you saw in the subareas, it outlines what we should be encouraging, and so this just allows us to have a guide and a review process for making sure those things are being advanced as we move forward. So, it's not really a burdensome thing, it's just knowing kind of what we're going to do and how the pieces fit together on the front end.
Stan, do we or you anticipate CRAs in those two new areas that you cited?
Well, as we go forward, we'll look to see what roles the CRA can play in the areas like airways, Omen Arena, and the downtown area. The CRA already has two redevelopment areas that cover that and have TIFs established, so those areas are already being incentivized and looked at by the CRA. The only ones that are not are the Old Hickory Mall area and South Highland, and part of South Highland is with the Bemis redevelopment area that we established, but the east side currently is not, and not, and all that corridor is not, so the CRA will look at ways that it will participate in those, and, you know, as we see a need, we can use them to accomplish some of those goals.
Sure there's an opportunity.
There is, and again, there's other ways that we can do that, too. I don't know that we'll be looking at TIFs, because you can't TIF everything, so I don't know that we're looking at TIFs for those areas, but we are, we will be looking at other mechanisms, and John Howso with House Levine, as we talk about the plan, will discuss some of those funding sources and things that we can look at, but I can look to, a predominant one being a lot of private-public partnerships, because that's the way we've been able to accomplish great things up to this point with our redevelopment areas, so in these areas that we're looking at now, we'll continue that effort.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, conducted the public hearing. Any additional discussion from council on the passage of this ordinance on first reading? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item four, consideration of ordinance to amend ordinance number 2002-022, an ordinance levying local litigation tax. We have the city judge here, Judge Anderson, and we have our city attorney, and this is basically an increase in litigation tax, which is now currently, as I understand, 1375 per case. They will be going to, the proposed amendment is going to $20, and that's in order to create sufficient funding for operation of Judge Anderson's drug court. Judge?
Good morning.
Twenty-five dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-five dollars.
What we're asking for is an increase in the litigation tax by $11.25. By order of this body, all litigation taxes will go to fund the drug treatment court. The only people who will be paying the increase or the litigation tax are people who are found guilty or people who plead guilty, so it only affects a small group of people. After two years, we will look at the, see where we stand on this. If it brings in more money than we need, it will be reevaluated by this body. But Jackson City Court's courts' costs and fines are probably the lowest in the state, and this increase of $11.25 will help us to fund the money we need for the drug court.
Okay, any questions from council? Do you have some information pertinent to this?
I do, if I may. Good morning, Judge. Surely want to commend your effort in the drug court. We surely appreciate everything you're doing. I guess my only concern would be, Karen, how much did we write off for city court in our last write-offs, if you remember? A million, okay. That would be my only concern, if we are putting ourselves kind of in the same place we are now by raising the tax, would that increase the number of people who can't pay, and then, again, increase the write-offs that we do?
I understand your question. What we're doing is we're going to revamp our whole collection process. We have a group that's going to be going to Shelby County to examine their collection process and hope to do better. The rates, we've had a good relationship in working with Judge Potter in Shelby County, and hope to come up with some ways to keep from having to write off money. It's a, this is a system-wide problem that other cities, Nashville just wrote off $1.5 billion. It's just sometimes hard to collect money.
Right. Well, thank you, Judge, I appreciate it, and again, we appreciate your efforts with the drug treatment.
I'd like to make a motion, and once again, I'd like to say, too, you do a great job of work at a facility that did with a lot of the people that you did with, and I think what you do and Mr. Hubbard do in our city is making a big difference in our community.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion, and this is an ordinance on, again, on first reading, which necessitates a public hearing, so let me open the public hearing to see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance on first reading. And hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we need a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any additional discussion on this ordinance? Councilman Wallace.
Judge, the $25 we're raising it to, taking into consideration the amount we have to write off, would that actually cover the cost, or is that going to just be action we can do, or?
We expect with the increase that it will come out right about even for the drug court. We don't anticipate making money, and as I said, after two years, it's reevaluated. If it needs to be reduced after two years, it could be reduced after two years, but costs go up, and about two months ago, we had a, took some action in this, with this body, and we're saving $25,000. We're looking at ways to cut costs. But the drug courts is certified by the state now. And it's one of the leading courts in the country. They call upon us to teach other people how to form drug courts, and, but we just need this little bit extra.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion, the second, public hearing conducted. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Item eight, the second readings, we have consideration of ordinance to amend Title Five, Chapter Three of the Jackson Municipal Code relative to property tax collection. Council has passed this ordinance on first reading.
Move the approval.
Motion, the second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And item two is consideration of ordinance to repeal the official code, city of Jackson, relative to occupational safety and health.
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item nine, it's a new business. We have some change orders relative to our tennis complex, change order number two to Delta Electrical to add conduit to the new tennis court project. You have a list of those change orders. We elected when we took bids on that particular item to eliminate some of it initially, to see if it could be done at a lower cost, and we investigated a lot of that. We've been successful in some respects, others we're still working on, but the first one is change order number two. Susan, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you. As the mayor said, the tennis court project is coming along smoothly, and Tom Windbush is our project manager out there, and he's done a great job at pulling all of these together to make sure everybody's working, and the tennis court will be finished in a timely manner, but, you know, when we come out there, we see things that need to be changed sometimes, and we bring those change orders to you, so the first change order is to Delta Electrical to add the conduits for the new tennis court project. Tom can talk to you about the technical aspect of this, of these change orders, but the amount is $14,310.
Any questions for council on that change order?
I'm assuming that it would cost us a whole lot more to do this after the fact, if we did decide to develop more down the road, it would be to put it in upfront.
On this particular one, if we don't do that, we have no power, period.
But what I'm saying is that we don't need power over there now, we may in the future.
No, no, this is for a different item. What this is for originally, this is one for the 14.
Okay, okay, I'm with you, okay.
Is originally, all the power coming into the courts were going to be underground and provided by JEA. They decided to go with poles and power overhead, so the next to the last pole, we have to run the conduit from the pole to the transformer, and then they'll run the wire through the pipe.
Okay, any other questions on that particular change, or is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, discussion, council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the second one is change order number three to MSB. And the second one is change order number three to MSB to furnish and install a drinking fountain at the new tennis courts. And that amount is two thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And the next one is change order number four to MSB to furnish and install irrigation at the new tennis courts. That's eighteen thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion is a second, second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And the next one is change order five to MSB to furnish and install stone to be used on the restroom building at the new tennis courts.
So, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And the next one is to award a contract to MSB for paving the parking and drive areas at Veterans Drive. The amount of that is two hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars. And this is for the paving, the rock overlay, and the extruded curb and striping.
How many spaces do we have? Parking space?
Don't know exactly.
Was this not in the original, paved, not in the original plan? This is a huge change order that...
Now, this, this one is not a change order. Um, this one's not a change order. This is to award a contract to MSB. All of the contracts for the tennis court have been brought to you, but this one did not because we were hoping that the city could take care of this, so it'd be less expensive. But, the engineer's estimate was around two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And, uh, we bid this out originally, but I held it to see if we could get a cheaper price.
So, Mayor, was this in the original cost we approved of the?
It was in the original cost. We just elected when the bids came in to pull this particular segment out of the original contract. Because we felt like through our, through our existing paving contract, that we would be able to do better financially, but we saw we could not. So, now we're simply awarding this bid, uh, this part of the bid that, which was taken initially when we, when we asked for it.
Mayor, I have a question. I mean, Susan, uh, what was the total amount of the change orders, just for the record?
Well, it's... It's about fifty thousand dollars.
I think it's roughly fifty thousand. We had a deduct on the paving of what Tom, based on their initial bid, uh, it was about fifteen thousand.
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, fourteen to fifteen thousand deduct on that.
Motion for the contract?
And Susan, of course, on the contract, it was bid out?
It was. It was bid out. We had three bidders, Martin Paving, MSB, and Ford. I bid this out last year, when I bid out all the other contracts. But, as the mayor said, we held it, hoping that the city could award this to our paving contract and/or, uh, resurfacing contract. But, the prices were higher. So, it was decided, we got to have it paid.
Right.
So, these bids that I took last year were less expensive than what we could get. So, we went ahead and are asking for the paving contract to be awarded. Uh, yes. The other two companies had a sixty-day, you know, if we didn't award it within sixty days, um, they couldn't hold their prices firm, but MSB could.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, where are we on this item? Do we have a motion or do we have additional discussion? Where are we, Anita?
No motion.
No motion. Do we have a motion for approval of the contract? Have a motion, a second, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And the last item under these would be a change order to Hartford and Roberts for additional design work at the tennis courts.
It is, and the fee is one thousand fifty dollars. It was just, um, a small change that he needed to do, and he could do this by means of sketches instead of preparing all of the official documents. So, I asked him to do that for one thousand fifty dollars. And he did that for us, and we ask that you approve that change order of Hartford.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While we have Ms. White here on the same subject matter, we have a situation at Forest Hill Park that's been going on over a year with respect to construction. I'm gonna ask Mr. Black and Mr. White, please update me. We, residents have been waiting over a year.
Mayor, I don't think we got a vote on that last.
We didn't get...
Did we not, we didn't, we didn't vote on that last?
We voted, but we didn't hear the result.
Okay, um, then discussion on that particular contract. If not, council, please vote. Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, in regards to project at Forest Hill, we have had trouble with the contractor, uh, in terms of getting things done in a timely manner. We have had communication, a conversation with the contractor, myself, Ms. White, and also, uh, Sam Dawson. The last conversation we had was, we need to get it done, and what had happened, the pavement wasn't done. But, now the paving lot has been done and paved. The only thing that's left for him to do is to backfill to the pavement and to put up the security. Now, I'm going to check today to see what the deal is, why he has not completed that. But, those are the only remaining items left, backfill and some landscaping and, uh, take a contractor, without calling names, there's been a contractor there.
Call his name.
I wouldn't recommend, I'm letting Ms. White talk about it.
Who is the contractor? I mean, we...
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Who is the contractor?
Go ahead, Councilman Buchanan.
Uh, we've been waiting over a year, and the residents have been getting home, and the organizations have been planning, uh, back-to-school rallies, uh, before their functions. And sororities and fraternities, and they had food, and they had donations, everything ready, and everything's just gone to blue. So, do we have a, any way we can levy fines for this, this, it's been over a year?
We can, uh, councilmen. Um, it's very difficult to take their bond. I have tried this on numerous occasions, and it's very difficult to do. But, you can rest assured, as long as I'm here, I'm not recommending this company for city work anymore. We have, we have been so patient, uh, we have been tough with them. We apologize to your constituents for not having this park available for their picnics and family reunions. But, we have had a lot of trouble with this, with this man. Um, it, Tony, do you know when he should maybe have everything ready?
Well, if he's just going back, we can do that in, in, in two days.
And the lighting?
Lighting, he has to put a security light up. I mean, this, this stuff could get done in a couple of days, what's left to do.
Well, as you all do, all you can. Mr. Chairman, ask for your help also.
Sure.
I, I think Tony, you, you ought to give him a couple of days, but then tell him who, everybody who he is.
We'll be more than happy to leave him.
The last time we had a hard conversation, we gave him, we gave him to the fifteenth.
Yeah, I knew until July fifteenth to finish this.
August fifteenth.
Two weeks ago, when August fifteenth, and he sure, he told us. And we still got, uh, but no more days to finish it. I was there because then they were giving the move.
Okay.
But, all three of us will go and speak to him today.
Thank you.
Even if we have to go together.
Mr. Chairman, you remember we dug ground in March last year.
Yeah.
Do we know?
It was cold.
We feel your pain.
Thank you.
I told you, don't wait two days.
You, you been getting complaints of, trust me.
Well, we have, too.
Been tough work, been on the ground.
Thank you.
So, I, I feel it.
Okay, thank, thank you all. Uh, let's go to, uh, item seven. Uh, Stan, I'll ask you to come up, and if you'll bring up our consultant. Talk about and adopt the One Jackson Civic Master Plan. And council will note that we do have a resolution, so that will be in the form of a resolution. So, we'll hear results of what, about eighteen months, maybe? Almost eighteen months of work.
Well, Mayor, I have John Houseill, uh, with House Levine here today. And, and he's gonna, uh, give kind of an overview and talk about, uh, the implementation part of the plan, which is a new component of, of the plan. Uh, this has been a, a, a long road, but anything you want to do, uh, and do well, it takes time to get all that accomplished. Especially since our number one goal in all of this was to involve the citizens of Jackson. We wanted this to be a One Jackson plan. We wanted to have input from all areas of Jackson. We did not want it to be just, uh, our plan or one group's plan, but we wanted it to be all, uh, citizens of Jackson's plan. So, I think that we've done well, uh, trying to enlist the public, uh, comment. Uh, I, we've, we've enlisted the comments of business. Uh, we provided a website that they were allowed to produce more input. Uh, so, you know, of all the plans that I've been accomplished over my twenty-six years of, of doing this for the City of Jackson, this has been, uh, the most involved, uh, that we've had of all the plans that we've, uh, adopted or, or created. So, I feel good about that. Uh, I feel good about the quality of the product that we received. Um, this, this document has a, a lot of, uh, time and effort in it, and it also has a lot of details. Um, and it doesn't just brush over things, but it talks about in, in detail the things that face us and the things that we must do to continue to be a city that produces a quality of life that people want to enjoy and be here, uh, to enjoy. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to John Houseill, and he can, uh, go from there.
Thanks, Dan. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for, uh, having us here this morning. It's my privilege to be here, as you consider a resolution to support and adopt this document. Uh, as Stan indicated, this has been a process over the course of the last year or so, uh, working with, uh, every stakeholder group and aspect of this community to ensure that this Civic Master Plan is representative of everyone in this community and not just one faction, one board, one group, uh, or one agenda. Um, I'm gonna just provide a quick overview. It's about two hundred pages, double-sided, uh, with a lot of graphics and a lot of text. So, it's gonna be, uh, impossible, uh, to get it all in there in detail, but it's been fully vetted. So, I'm gonna go over a little bit of the process that led us here today, uh, highlight the different chapters that are in the document very briefly, just to get them out there on the record. And then, as Stan said, draw your attention into the implementation section, uh, to help you, staff, and other boards and commissions going forward, along with private investment, uh, to make the changes that we recommend as part of this document. Um, first and foremost, uh, this is a process over the last year that really went out of its way to, uh, work with the community. Uh, firstly, we should be thanking the Comprehensive Plan or Civic Master Plan Advisory Committee. This is a group of individuals comprised of residents, business owners, uh, different groups and affiliations. We wanted to make sure that this group touched this document on every step of the way. This is a group that didn't get a lot of fancy dog and pony show or presentations. This, as we met in a small room upstairs, we rolled up our sleeves, we had the document materials as they were drafted, and we reviewed and vetted and revised every step along the way before anything went out to public for review or consumption. So, I'd like to thank the advisory committee for the time that they spent over the course of the last year. Uh, and the Plan Commission as well, was it last month, the public hearing was conducted, uh, with unanimous approval for this document and the implementation section. Uh, the Comprehensive Plan or the Civic Master Plan is broken into the following sections. An introduction, which lays the context for the process and the document. A profile of the Jackson community, including demographics, review of school, population, income, growth projection, market potential, uh, potential gap analysis for retail, office, commercial, industrial, employment, and every different type of housing and residential capacity. Uh, detailed community outreach was conducted. We conducted, uh, workshops with the advisory committee. We conducted community workshops with the community at large. We conducted business workshops because businesses have a different perspective than do residents. Uh, we conducted a workshop with the Leadership Jackson, which was a great group of individuals. Uh, over fifty individual stakeholder interviews, one-on-one confidential interviews were conducted, uh, throughout the community, as well as visioning workshops in various open houses. Uh, some of the issues that arose from that early effort, uh, these are some of the issues that were raised by residents and business owners as priorities for the community. The downtown, what they consider to be geographic silos historically, some aspects of the community that weren't engaged as much as other neighborhoods were engaged. Uh, strong business community, combating blight in the neighborhoods, economic development and job growth and opportunity, crime and public safety, transportation options, uh, and accessibility, the quality of schools, blight, uh, vacancies and maintenance of property, local governance, parks and recreation. Uh, those were the different categories that came out. Um, from this, we created detailed goals and objectives. There are over eighty detailed objectives that break down specifically what the city ought to be working on over the course of the next ten to twenty years. These eighty objectives are, uh, broken into about twelve different categories. Each category has a specific goal, whether it's residential and neighborhood housing areas, whether it's commercial unemployment and economic investment, whether it is parks and recreation, environmental features, access to transportation, or, or local cooperation. Uh, these different categories provide over eighty different detailed recommendations. Um, we then developed the, division goals and objectives, growth scenarios. There's a section on land use and development that identifies, uh, every area within the city and your planning jurisdiction, uh, what the land use should be, whether it's residential, commercial, open space, community, public, utility, industrial, or employment. Uh, we covered the five different sub-areas that Stan and you were talking about previously, while we argued the different investment and funding scenarios. Uh, we had worked with Kim Lee Horn Associates, uh, that helped us and primarily led the different sub-area plan components, as well as assisted us with some of the transportation recommendations. Uh, there's a section on transportation and mobility, community facilities and infrastructure, open space, recreation and environmental features, and then image and identity. It's important to note that the master plan is not regulatory-like zoning. It does not dictate what you can do with your property. Uh, it is not in, in exact, a financing mechanism. What it is, is a foundation for decision-making. It should assist Stan and city staff in every department as they prepare their annual budgets from the department level. It should assess Stan and every other department when they start meeting with developers long before it gets to this board for consideration to advise and guide private investment. It should serve as a foundation for decision-making for the planning commission as a developer proposes something for that group to consider. They can look at this document and say, is, Mr. Developer, is what you're proposing consistent with our Civic Master Plan? It should be used by this group that I'm sitting in front of right now, the city council, as you consider investment, capital improvements, budget allocation, and development approval to see if incrementally things that have come before you are consistent with the long-term vision of this community. Again, it is meant to help guide and inform decision-making, not dictate outcome. Uh, the one thing I want to focus on before I sort of turn it over, Mr. Mayor, to you and, uh, the board for any questions and answers, is the, uh, implementation section. The last section of all of our documents, we feel, have to be detailed implementation. And, um, you know, gone are the days, you hear this phrase all the time, you know, we don't want this to be a document that sits on a shelf somewhere. Um, that's true for two different reasons. Uh, everything you do now lives and breathes on the internet, like it or not. Um, the firm that was, uh, not mentioned before this on an item could very well be being tweeted about right now. You just don't know. Everything you do is on the internet. Uh, and planning documents are your first calling card. Uh, a local business that wants to move their company here is gonna check out your documents online. A young family that's debating whether to live here or in what area of the city is gonna see what you have planned for that area of the city online before they call anybody here. Uh, this is your first and, uh, most powerful calling card and marketing tool, is this plan on your internet, on the internet and the website. So, that's why we make it graphic, easy to use, and easier to read, uh, and visually sort of compelling. The implementation section has to be specific enough to guide your decision-making. So, what we have done in the implementation section, if you have a hard copy of the document, it starts on page one hundred and eighty. Uh, this is the last chapter of the document to give you an indication of the size and scope of this document. Um, and what it does is it articulates specifically how to use this plan over time to actually get things done. You know, I often say we don't, uh, we don't live in Dubai or in Emirates, can just make an edict, and they can just do a massive project. Here, you do things incrementally. You talked about previously, you know, some of the items, some of the funding mechanisms that might be, uh, available in some of the, uh, sub-areas. Well, as projects come up one by one by one, you get one shot at doing that. And maybe next year, you get another shot at another project. And three years out, you get a shot at two projects. And over a decade, you can make a big impact incrementally, one project at a time. This is meant to help you make those decisions. So, we have a section in here that talks about how to use this plan on a day-by-day basis. It ought to be used by the different groups and agencies we identify, as well as the private sector. It ought to be updated and reviewed and monitored by Stan and his staff to make sure that it is poignant, uh, and still viable. Uh, it should be used to guide a rewrite of your zoning ordinance as required. If you put a plan into place and then don't amend your zoning to dovetail with it, uh, your zoning's not gonna help you achieve any of your objectives. Uh, zoning is not planning. This is planning. Change your zoning to follow this. That's your next step. Uh, we talk about capital improvement programming and how this should be used to allocate and prioritize funding for capital improvements. Um, and then we talk... Um, and then we talk about jurisdictional organization of the different agencies you ought to be working with. One of the key things we identify in here that Stan, uh, referred to was the funding organ, uh, funding, uh, opportunities. Um, there are several different ways to pay for things, and everything costs more money than you think. Well, you probably know, 'cause you're the ones who are allocating the funds. Um, and without the funding mechanisms in place, things don't get done. Uh, so what we have done here is we have organized the different funding mechanisms available for all the objectives we identify. Um, we start off with the general economic development, partner organizations, and who those are. We review tax increment financing, uh, uh, CBID, central business improvement districts, uh, block grants. And then we begin to identify fundings by different categories. Funding is typically specifically designed for types of projects. If you want to buy land for a new park or develop a new park, that is a specific pool of federal money or state money. If you want to put in a pedestrian trail, that's a specific pool of federal or state money. If you want to do a roadway capital improvement project to mitigate congestion or pollution, that's a separate pool of federal money. So as we identify these eighty-plus objectives and specific projects, for each one, we say, this is your best shot at getting funding for this project. And we also tie that into private investment. So we talk about the different incentives, facade improvement programs, lease marketing incentives, revolving loan funds, payment in lieu of taxes, tax competitive tax incentives, light industrial access programs, state fast track grants, Tennessee Valley Authority, uh, economic incentives. We identify all of these. These are general funding sources for incentives. Then we break it down into transportation and identify several pages of funding just for transportation improvements. Uh, we then break it down into sustainability and the environment, and the funding sources specifically for those types of projects, and again, several pages of that. We then break it down into parks, trails, and open space, and the several different types of funding options that are available specifically for those types of projects. Uh, arts and culture, same thing. Then I think maybe the most helpful thing is beginning on page one hundred and ninety-six, we get into what we call an implementation matrix. In the previous pages, we identify all the funding options, those federal, state, and other grant funding mechanisms that are available for you to help pay for city initiatives. Starting on page one hundred and ninety-seven, we create a matrix broken out by the chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. So you can look on, uh, page one hundred and ninety-seven, you'll see residential areas on that table. See if I can put it up here for people to sort of see, sort of give them a chance what it looks like. So this is the first page of the table. This table goes on for several, several pages. So the first category is residential areas. Within the category of residential areas, again, relating back to the text in the Comprehensive Plan, we say, what is the strategy that we're trying to talk about here? We're talking about increasing housing options. So we say, what are the recommended actions the city should take? So for that one strategy, we've identified four different, uh, recommended actions. For each one of these actions, for that one strategy, we say, this is the type of priority it is, either priority one or priority two, or something that should be ongoing. Priority one is something that is most urgent, or it doesn't cost a whole lot, something that you can do more quickly, get a success out of the gate more, uh, more quickly. Or it's something that has to be done before you can take on a level-two action, sort of a first step. So identify when this action should be undertaken. We identify the potential partners specifically for that recommended action, whether it's JHA, CRA, specific property owners, or some other organization or entity that the city will have to partner with to get that project done. The city can't do everything on its own. A lot of the issues the community faces are not within the municipal jurisdiction solely to solve. So we identify the organizational or other partners the city has to work with to take on that objective. We then take a look at process indicators or progress indicators. How do you know if you're achieving success? So we talk about, uh, increasing housing options or housing choice. How can you begin to measure if you're actually making improvements in certain neighborhoods? So we identify the types of things you need to, and, uh, progress indicators you need to keep track of. We then talk about the potential funding sources. So for each action, we say, here's what the city needs to do, here's who you need to partner with, here's when you need to do it, here's how you can tell if you're making a difference, and here's how you can begin to get it paid for. And we identify the funding sources that are specifically created or most eligible for helping the city pay for that action. So we have done this for residential neighborhoods, commercial reinvestment, growth, infrastructure, parks and open space, arts and culture, and so on, and so on, and so on. So the last several pages of this document is this table. Now, this should be able to be used, uh, to evaluate departmental budgets on an annual basis, uh, city budgets on an annual basis, and as an initiative comes forward that somebody wants to take on, you can say, here's the action, here's what we need to start calling up on the phone to start partnering with and having some discussions, and let's get Stan and his crew going on some of these grant applications on these specific grants, 'cause this is how we're gonna get this paid for. So we try to be as specific as possible. Um, as new funding mechanisms come to the surface, 'cause new ones come up all the time, those are some of the things that Stan and his staff can data mine, so this table can be updated on an annual basis. We got these three C, three things done, take it off the list. We got five more priorities we want to add, stick them onto the list. The federal government just came out with these new funding programs. This fits perfectly with these, these eighteen objectives. Let's plug those in so we can keep track of it. So this is the section that can be updated on a regular basis, and it's very, very easy to use. If anybody reads any one of these priorities or objectives and wants to know a little bit more about the context as to why it's a recommendation, they can go back to that section of the plan, see the text, the photographs, the designs, the maps, the context, and the rationale for that recommendation. So everything is organized to tie back into the document, so it's easily referenceable. So again, I, I, it's a lot out there. There's no other way to sort of like present a two-hundred-page document of this detail. Uh, but again, uh, it's been vetted, uh, every step of the way with the community, with Stan, uh, and his staff, with the other departments, uh, with the advisory committee, uh, and at a public hearing with the Plan Commission. So, uh, we're really proud of this document. Uh, I think the city should be proud of the level of effort that its residents and business community have put forward to help with this document. Uh, it's not our document, and it's not Stan's, it's not yours, it's the community's, and they helped every single step along the way. Uh, and I've already heard from a couple of people that I spoke with this morning, um, you know, they think that they can see their fingerprints on this document. They helped attend, uh, they attended some of the workshops, some of the open houses, they participated in some of those interviews and discussions, and look at this and they say, you know what? This is exactly what we talked about six months ago. Um, so with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have, but, uh, again, I'm honored to be here and, uh, really proud of the work that the city has done to get to this point.
Thank you. Before, uh, I think counsel may have some question, let me just, you know, on behalf of the city, thank you all for your, for your efforts. It's been a, been a work in progress for well over a year. Engaged hundreds of our citizens in putting this together, and, and the one thing I want to reiterate the fact that, like you just said, it's not, it's not my document, not counsel's document, it's not the city's document. It's a document put together by the people who live in this city, and a lot of people have worked off a hard, it's a voluminous, uh, document, um, kind of condensed toward the end, which I've had a chance to, to go through. And, um, you know, we got a lot of work to do, so let's get to work. I think the first thing I've got to do is get an implementation action committee put together, and, uh, we're going to be discussing that with, with council members and with staff. Uh, we're going to, to get it together to start taking a look at first steps, best practices toward getting first steps underway for, for this master plan. But it's a roadmap. This is, this is how we're going to grow for the next twenty years. Needs to be consistent. Every department head in our city and possibly county needs to have a copy in their office, which we will see that's done after adoption of the resolution by council. It'll immediately be, the process will begin on getting it on our website to where anyone in this city, anyone worldwide, can go there and, and view this document if they'd like to. So with that, I, I thank you for your efforts. It's a very comprehensive, very complete document, and it's, it's a document which will be used to guide this city for at least the next fifteen or twenty years. So with that, counsel, any, any questions, any comments?
When we, um, pass this, uh, or adopt it, um, does the state, um, is any way they could interfere with it? Or is this just strictly ours, and, I mean, do they have to accept any part of it?
No, they do not.
No, the state enables local jurisdictions to have, to develop comprehensive plans and, and actually encourage them to develop comprehensive plans, so this is just.
Unless there's something in it that goes against state guidance.
And, and to, it's a good question, uh, and, and one of the things we did at the very beginning of the process is we reviewed all the plans from almost any other overlapping jurisdiction, state, county, planning authority, you name it. We looked at it, whether it was old, whether it was new, to make sure we weren't butting hatches, something we just adopt, or something else that was already in motion or in track, unless we wanted to sort of have that fight, and we didn't have any of those confluences. Um, as Stan indicated, two of the most important enabling acts that states have are the nineteen twenty-six and nineteen twenty-eight Standard State Zoning Enabling Act, which allows municipalities to zone, and the nineteen twenty-eight Standard State Planning Enabling Act, which allows municipalities to have comprehensive plans. Most counties and states defer to municipal judgment and planning in its decisions. So it's not that we typically have to capitulate to the state, it's typically the other way around on municipal land use and economic issues.
So they don't have to approve this?
No, in fact, they, if they're gonna do something in this area, they would defer to this document more than the other way around.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question.
Any other, any other comment, Councilman Weller?
Did you say this is on the internet now, or we need to put it on the internet?
Oh, I've sent the, the, the link to, to Wanda, so she'll, as soon as she can get it up, it'll be.
After we approve it.
Will it be the full document? Do we have a summary that we put on the internet as well as the full document?
Uh, we have the full document up there. Now, uh, as to a summary, uh, I guess we could.
We can do that.
We can do that.
I was just wondering, or, you know, you're saying people want to look at it. If I'm purchasing a city and I see a thirty-eight-dollar page document, I'm not gonna look at it, but I might look at a summary, yeah, uh, so.
There's a, there's a few different ways we can handle it. Um, sometimes they'll load it up as one whole document, sometimes they'll load it up by chapter. So the PDFs are smaller, it loads more quickly. Uh, and sometimes after it gets adopted, the city will ask us to prepare, uh, an executive summary or a poster plan or some other sort of condensed version, hitting the high notes, if you will. Uh, the draft is on there right now, and it says working draft for discussion purposes. As soon as it gets, uh, adopted by the city, we'll change it and say adopted with a date on it and swap it out for the new one on it. So we can handle a more abbreviated version if the city would like us to do that. And we can work with Stan to get that done.
Any other, any other questions or comments from counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Been around on this council a long time. And this Jack, Jackson Civic Master Plan is one of the finest I've seen. Let me say to you that this is my seventh plan that I've seen and been through. Effect on end results is what we're looking for.
Right.
The implementation, you know, the old saying is talk is cheap, what we gonna do? Are we gonna make our city better in, uh, rehabilitation and new buildings, new structures? I wanna see some results. I know it takes money, Mr. Chairman, don't look at me, but we gonna get some money. But I wanna say that you have done a fine job. It's up to the mayor and the council, his staff, the community, to make it work. It's one master civic plan, and we gotta make it work. Uh, that's what the people put us up here for, to make it work. If not, we're just sitting ducks and we need to move out the way. Mr. Chairman, move that we adopt the resolution.
Second. If we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, it's presented. Any additional comments or questions from counsel? If not, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Thank you very much. It's been a privilege to work with you all. Thank you.
Uh, item eight is, uh, consideration of board appointments for the Jackson Housing Authority Board and the reappointment of Charles Dawson.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve. If there's a second, second, any discussion, counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item nine is budget amendments. Bill?
Good morning. We have one budget amendment for you today.
Good morning.
Uh, first, we have the drug fund that has capital funding, the request in the amount of hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, the federal effort sharing fund, and the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars, uh, for the purchase of new video system for the Jackson Police Department, and also for new Glock pistols that they've had for ten years, and they're replacing those. And members of the police department here, if you have any questions about the funding request.
I'll listen to one amendment, right?
I'm sorry.
One amendment?
Just one amendment, yes, sir.
Is there a motion for approval?
So, my, my, second.
Motion, second, discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill. Last item, final item, consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars. That's a motion to second.
Yeah, board appointment.
Already did that.
We've already done that.
You did? We move it slow then.
Uh, counsel, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
If there being no further business, meeting is adjourned. All right, all right, another month, another dollar.